Midwest City Council to order. Thank you for being here. First off, I'd like to say welcome and we have a action-packed agenda this evening, so have fun. I'd like to ask you to stand as I call Mr. Sullivan down to offer the invocation. Also, we have two cadets from Midwest City High School ROTC program. A Cadet William Jones from Midwest City plans to go in Air Force after he graduates. And Timothy Blankenship, we talked about this for a minute, he plans to go to OSU, but that's still up in the air.
Go Bucks.
With that being said, welcome and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Could you bow at me, please? Gracious heavenly Father, we're blessed to be in your presence tonight. Father, we thank you for this occasion and these men and women for their service and their sacrifice that they make serving this community. Father, I'm asking a blessing of your wisdom and your discernment be upon them tonight. Father, they have many items before them, some of them controversial, some not so controversial. Father, I ask that personal agendas be set aside and that their decisions be for the good of the whole. Father, we thank you for this great city, state, and this wonderful nation that we are privileged to live in. We're thankful for those who defend this country and are sacrificing all over the world tonight. Father, we just give, ask that you give them peace and comfort in their families while they're serving. Thank you for your son, Jesus. Thank you for the blood that was shed on our behalf and the freedom we have from sin because of it. We ask this in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I might want to point out that these two clowns decided to put on the same name tag just to mess with Mayor Jones and Jones. So their commander put them up to... Okay, we go into the community announcements. Couple of things I've got. Police Department of the City of Midwest City sponsored a three-on-three basketball tournament last weekend. It was a huge success and a lot of interaction with the police department and the community. I don't know how many entries we had, but the park was full and it was a great success. And thanks to the police department for stepping out and getting that going. Also, we had our sixth annual Veterans Day Parade. We had eighty-five entrants this year, went out without a hitch, went on without a hitch. And largely due to the efforts of Von Sullivan and his crew. Just awesome, once again, Von, I can't say, I don't know what else to say. And also, two Midwest City schools have advanced into the second round of playoffs, high school football. So we need to congratulate them. That's awesome. So also, our neighborhood initiative folks collected sixteen thousand five hundred dollars worth of food last weekend at Sam's. This will go to prepare food baskets for the needy during Christmas. And we also are opening up, we've got several things going on. I ask that you check your website or our website this week. And with that, I'll go around the horseshoe. Ms. Eads, you had a couple?
Sorry. Just reminded me to turn on my microphone, I apologize. There's a social media campaign going on. It was initiated by Oral and Maxial Facial Associates for coats for kids from Midwest City Elementary. And I want to thank them and acknowledge their efforts. They've been a challenge to other Midwest City businesses. So if anybody on the horseshoe, anybody in the audience has any connection to Midwest City businesses, to encourage them to rise to the challenge. Jeff Harrison, who's in the front row, I think is going to give some press on the issue in the Beacon. We're hopefully going to get something maybe on the city's website about that. If not, by all means, please email me and if I can connect you with the folks from Midwest City Elementary or another elementary in your neighborhood. Teachers were buying coats over at Midwest City Elementary for some of the kids because they didn't have the resources for them. So please, you know, if you can, it's my personal plea that everybody try who can to help out at least one individual or one family this season. So any efforts are appreciated. And then Thursday night, tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday night is the Walk the Lights night. Beginning at six o'clock officially, volunteers to be there at five-thirty, that's what's stuck in my head. And also, tomorrow night is the meeting, Christine, if you want to jump in on this one. Tomorrow night is the meeting on designing the park. And so it starts at six o'clock at the, five-thirty, sorry, five-thirty at the community center. If any of you would like to come out and be part of that process, your input would be greatly appreciated.
And I would like to say that on that particular meeting, it is a community meeting, and it is having to do with your input for is the park of what you would like to see installed at the park. I think it would be very informational for the city, the residents to attend because there would be a lot of information going forth. The consultant for the park will be there asking questions and giving out information and planning as how this park should look and what we want there. Also, I would like to thank Terry Craft and Ashley from Midwest City working with the Kaboom. The park was installed at Tail Star on Wednesday. Yes, I have to remember, we had a lot of things going on this week. But anyway, it was really great. The park was installed in one day. So that lets you know anything can be done. But the kids at Tail Star, they are really appreciative and just excited about the playground. So I would like to thank all the sponsors, CarMax and all of them. Even Own Q donated coffee when they ran out and it was cold outside. So that was really great. So with that said, that's all my announcements, thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, just one more also that involved to the three-on-three basketball tournament. For those of you who weren't able to be out there, I wanted to do a shout-out to a couple of businesses, including McConnell's Wrecker and Rapid Auto on Air Depot, Red Carpet Detail. Officer Tommy Lance and several other members of the Midwest City PD worked together with individuals from those businesses. They donated a car to a veteran who did not have any transportation and awarded it out of the three-on-three basketball tournament. You may have seen it on the news, there was a lot of coverage out there for it. I think we're going to try to give some kind of recommendation, excuse me, recognition to these folks. Maybe by way of proclamation if I can impose on the mayor about that. And I just wanted to acknowledge them. I also wanted to acknowledge Raisin Canes. They have been helping the Midwest City High School band with chicken and assisting with fundraiser as well as the Carl Albert High School Band with fundraising. And Tyler is the manager over there. If you haven't been to Raisin Canes, please stop by. He's got a good group of folks and he's doing a lot to try to engrain them into our community. And I'm very thankful for all of their efforts.
Ms. Sullivan, you got a couple?
You've got a big meeting, Mayor, I'll be brief. And all of this is on the Parks and Recreation website. Also, you can follow us on Facebook as well and get this same information. Thank you for the shout-out, Ms. Eads, for the Walk the Lights on Thursday night. Officially, we open on Friday night, Holiday Lights Spectacular. Opening ceremonies are five-thirty. Cars can start at six PM. So come join us for the official opening of Holiday Lights Spectacular. Volunteers are needed and you can sign up on the Parks and Rec website if you'd like to volunteer for that event. Tree lighting is November the twenty-seventh. We start at seven PM next door at the Nick Harris Community Center. Lot going on. It's a fabulous time of year, it's a fun time to be in Midwest City, Mayor, thank you.
And when will be, when will the park reopen, the lighting for the park?
Friday night, after six PM, officially, you can drive your car through Friday. If you want to walk, come Thursday night at six PM.
I'm thinking about it between now and then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I've just got two quick ones. Sanitation service next week with Thanksgiving. Thursday service will be on Wednesday. And Friday service remains the same and that applies to both sanitation and recycling. And I also want to give kudos and thanks to the Susan Arnold Foundation. That was the foundation that really provided a significant amount of funding for the three-on-three basketball tournament.
Okay, we have a couple of proclamations. We've got one really big one, we'll get that in a minute. I'm getting wood. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a lot of locally-owned businesses in Midwest City. And I want to invite you to patronize these businesses. One in particular, Jitters, is a little coffee shop over on Tenth and Post and Fifteenth. Another one's Underground at sixteen hundred South Douglas. Ace Alternator up on Fifteenth Street, been in business since nineteen sixty-eight. So there's a lot of locally-owned businesses that I would like for you to try to patronize before you go outside our city. And this proclamation recognizes those businesses. Whereas City of Midwest City wishes to recognize our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy. Whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are twenty-eight million small businesses in the United States representing ninety-nine point seven percent of all businesses with employees in the United States. And they were responsible for sixty-three percent of new jobs created over the last twenty years. Whereas, small businesses employ forty-eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And ninety-one percent of all consumers believe that supporting small businesses, independently owned, restaurants and bars are important. Whereas seventy-six percent of all consumers plan to go to one or more of small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And on an average, thirty-three percent of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independent, locally-owned retailers and restaurants. Whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across country, have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas Midwest City wishes to support our local businesses that create jobs and boost our local economy and provide our neighborhood, preserve our neighborhoods, I therefore, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth to be Small Business Saturday. Thank you. This one is a hard one. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Linda Rooney. She is a... This is Linda Rooney. Linda has been employed with the City of Midwest City for fifty-one years. She knows where all the skeletons are buried and several council people and a couple of mayors as well. But she's been a backbone of our community and our city for fifty-one years. And she's decided to retire. And although it's with heartfelt gratitude that we see you retire, it's also selfish that we'd like to see you stay on, but I understand. Just don't run for office. Whereas, Ms. Linda Rooney moved to Midwest City at the age of five, graduated from the third graduating class of Carl Albert High School, and spent her entire working career for the City of Midwest City, a total of fifty-one years. And whereas, in nineteen sixty-five, at the age of seventeen, through a program called Neighborhood Youth Corps, Linda was hired as a part-time switchboard operator making a dollar twenty-five an hour, where she pulled cords and replugged them to connect all calls and she helped with customer service in the billing department. Whereas, she listened to "I Can't Get No Satisfaction" by The Rolling Stones and saw the sound of music at the drive-in, she quickly set a precedence and was a dedicated, dedicated to being the best and most faithful employee on the switchboard and was hired as full-time when she graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-six. And after two, or after a two-year military necessitated move, was hired again in nineteen sixty-eight as clerk in customer service. And whereas, because of Linda's work ethic and spirit of hospitality, she quickly promoted with yearly evaluations stating that she was an outstanding employee and became Assistant Human Resources Director in two thousand. Whereas, while achieving greatness in her work assignments, she met and married her soulmate, Jim, and they had four wonderful children, who have blessed them with nine beautiful grandchildren and one precious grand, great-granddaughter. Now therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November fifteenth, twenty-seventeen, as Linda Rooney Day. That one's a hard one and best of luck, Linda. We'll have her party tomorrow. Okay, with that being said, we will move into the consent agenda of our council meeting tonight. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the council members, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of council members or of members of the audience who wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of pulling item number four and item number ten.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Motion is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items four and items ten. No further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Item C four is discussion consideration of awarding a bid to EMC Services LLC in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars for the construction of eight bus shelters along the Ambarque Route fifty in Midwest City. We're requesting this item be continued till the next meeting so we can do a related supplement to the budget to fund these, to fund this work.
Move to so to continue.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, next discussion or next pull item.
Next item is discussion consideration of awarding the bid and entering into a contract with MTZ Construction, Inc. in the amount of twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Air Depot Boulevard Railroad Construction Project. We would ask that this be continued to the first meeting in December so that we would have time to meet with ODOT regarding any potential reimbursement for this construction work.
Move to so continue to the first meeting in December, please.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
First item is PC nineteen twenty, public hearing with discussion consideration of approval of an ordinance to redistrict, ordinance redistricting from R six single-family detached residential and R two family attached residential to a planned unit development, PUD, governed by the R six single-family detached residential district for the property described as a part of the northeast quarter of Section One Township eleven north, Range one west, located in the four hundred block of South Post Road. This item was continued from the September twenty-sixth, twenty-two thousand seventeen and October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen council meetings. Mr. Arles?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Henson noted, this item has been continued from a couple of meetings. At that time, the council had recommended that the applicant submit a proposal for the, to handle the drainage complaints or the potential drainage issues from the surrounding property area and how this development might affect that. The applicant did submit a letter on November third that said that they would meet those requirements as, or propose to meet those requirements as the development moves forward. Patrick was unable, the city engineer, Patrick Minifield, was unable to be here tonight. But after talking with him, that letter does not meet the requirements that set forth by the council. There were no drainage requirements, calculations, elevations really taken for the homes. It still submits a problem, a potential problem for the drainage in the area. At this point, I think there's probably three options, either to continue this item, to give the applicant further time to meet those requirements, reject it, or approve the zoning request.
Motion to reject at this time?
This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, anyone having any input on this particular item? Hey, Ms. Eads, go ahead. Or I'm sorry.
Craig Dawkins, I live in Hunters Glen, too. I stated last time I was worried about the drainage and that's really what, all I'm concerned about is the drainage. And we do have drainage issues in that area and I don't really care. I don't really feel strongly one way or the other except for the drainage. So just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins.
Mr. Mayor, and I concur with what Mr. Dawkins just said. We are, we routinely are addressing what I label as sins of others, things that have been done in the past that we're now having to fix. We set basically some objectives for the developer to do, he didn't meet them. The residents over there brought these concerns to us that I believe are legitimate. I went over there and looked. I think that the current concerns are legitimate. And I can't in good faith approve it because, number one, they didn't do what we asked. And number two, I don't want to, there's enough drainage issues and that's my ward over there in that war, in that particular area, and I don't want to add more to it.
I'd like to renew my motion to reject this item for the reasons stated by Councilman Byrne.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd just like to oppose on the fact that I believe, did he state that he is still working on this or what? What is, is that what you were stating, that he's, he's working on it?
Well, I, and we've included the letter in the packet and I don't know that we have, we don't have it on the overhead. But it says something to the effect that they will be addressed in the future as, at the time of development or at the time of the plating. And I think in order to move forward with the zoning on this, there's just a lot of, a lot of concerns that have been raised by the surrounding property owners. And it makes it extremely difficult to deal with those at the time of, after the zoning is granted, at the time of plating, because the minimum standards are so, well, they're minimal.
And Billy, though, if we reject this tonight and they come up with what we've asked for, it goes back to the Planning Commission and back to us again. So it's not like, Christine, it's not like we're telling this forever. We're just asking them to do what we'd asked a month ago.
Right, that's what, that's my concern.
And so, no, they can, if they bring that stuff back to us.
At least trying to develop it.
Let me remind the horseshoe, we've closed discussion on this item, we're in the middle of the vote. So can I count your vote as a?
But I, I said nay and I was discussing why I said nay, that I wanted...
And the appropriate point of the discussion would have been in the discussion portion of that. So I'm counting your vote as a no?
Nay, because I want to see if he's going to fulfill, is trying to work on this situation and try to develop the harmony.
Well, I don't know if the applicant, what the...
You want now?
I don't know what the applicant's intents are. I think, you know, that...
I think we can address that afterwards. Any abstentions? The motion carries, thank you.
Next item is PC nineteen twenty-four, public hearing with discussion consideration of approval of the preliminary plat of Florence Estates for the property described as a part of the northeast quarter of Section One Township eleven north, Range one west, located in the fourth hundred block of South West Road. This item was continued from the October twenty-fourth meeting. Mr. Arles, I would assume that since the zoning was denied, that the council should consider denying the preliminary plat?
Yes, yes, it was tabled and because the applicant did request that the deadlines for action on this be suspended so that the zoning could be heard. Now that that's been heard, I would recommend that it either be sent back to the Planning Commission for denial or go ahead and deny it.
This is a perfect spot. If we're going to deny this, to answer Christine's questions, if she wants to bring them forward because it's a discussion, and this is the appropriate time to have that so we can make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Okay, and I'm going to just go ahead and I, it is a public hearing, I recognize that. I'm not going to prematurely jump the gun again. However, I'm just going to go ahead and state because this agenda item is directly related to agenda item number one that we just voted to reject, that I'm going to be proffering a motion to reject this associated agenda item as well.
I will second that. We have time for discussion, Craig.
We do have, this would be the appropriate time for discussion on this item. Go ahead, Ms. Allen.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. My concerns was having the owner, him having a chance to try to do what we have asked. Now, I am asking that when I vote tonight, is this going to deplete with his effort in trying to go ahead, go forward with what we have asked. I don't want to just say we're not trying to give this developer a chance. If he asks for something, I mean, we asked for something. Have we given him enough time? Because it seems to be a pretty big project, am I correct, Billy?
He's had a couple of months.
It's a pretty big project. And it does have to go through a lot of streamlines. Am I, I mean, I need some info on that.
Drainage is always complicated and I think when you're put on notice by the surrounding property owners, that there is an issue and that water is backing up onto the property, that extra care is taken to make sure that we don't contribute more with further development to that problem.
Right.
We as staff went out and did secure the consulting services of an engineer to review this project once something was submitted so that we could answer some of those problems or potential problems as they might arise with the proposal. The applicant's engineer is here and maybe it's a fair question to ask him.
Mr. Henson?
If I can just address one point, though, just in fairness, that we're all on the same page. Rejecting this agenda item at this point is not going to bar this developer's ability to bring this issue again, but it's going to have to start with the planning commission, correct, Billy?
Yes.
And then move back up before us again. But at this point.
And to be fair, to maybe answer the question in another way, this is typical, typically what we do is give a couple of meetings in order for them to bring in the proper requirements or to answer any specific questions and that's what we've done.
And that's been accomplished.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Did you get your answer?
Yes, Billy, he answered it because I don't, I would like to still, I think that what the residence is asking, and I do understand, we don't want a disaster from, from flooding and such and the drainage problem, I understand that. But I understand that this is someone who's trying to develop some property here in Midwest City and actually puts, you know, some pretty decent houses or whatever, homes there. But I want to know if that we are actually allowing him a chance. And that consists of, I know it's been a couple of months, but this seems to be a pretty big project.
It's seven houses, it's not a big project.
Maybe the drainage is that bad that it is taking a lot, longer than usual or what? I think that we do need property developed, but we don't need to have a disaster. I think that, you know, we need to allow him a chance to develop, so.
And we are.
So with that in mind, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
Any further discussion on this current item? Any further discussion?
If there's.
All in favor.
Sorry.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Next item is discussion consideration of restricting public vehicular access to Buena Vista Avenue from approximately January first, twenty eighteen to approximately May fifteenth, twenty eighteen for the re-surfacing and reconstruction relative to the second phase of Sooner Row Shopping Center. Mr. Clark, you want to come up and give us your name and address and a little bit of detail behind this proposal?
Leland Clark, I'm with Sooner Investment, twenty-three oh one West I forty-four Service Road, Oklahoma City, seven three one one two. What we're respectfully requesting is that in reconstructing Buena Vista, we're asking that the street be completely closed from fifteenth to the northern driveway to the nursing home that is located there. And completely reconstruct this street all at one time rather than doing it in phases. Construction people have assured me that by beginning January fifteenth, they believe that this work can be done by April one. To do it in phases would extend that from an additional forty-five days to sixty days and result in about twenty-five thousand dollars of additional cost. We do not need this street for our construction project. We're going to be able to do all of our construction traffic off of the center drive that will be completed to that point by mid-January. So this is the most effective, most cost efficient and the best way to complete this street as soon as possible. Any questions?
Just in follow-up, as I said earlier in pre-council, my concern is about the nursing home that's being established. I did receive communication from Mr. Coleman indicating that at present it looks like that Cross Timbers Nursing Home has now been licensed, the population is unknown but believed to be minimal, if any, at the present time, and there are other areas of ingress and egress. I would again just ask that you address that issue, if there are any limitations on that facility because of licensure issues or et cetera for the quickest ingress and egress for fire or ambulance personnel. And recognizing that there's going to be inconvenience in my ward, in the Ranchet neighborhood, related to the closure of that road, that it be done as expeditiously as possible. But I certainly recognize the cost factor savings, so.
We'll certainly check into all your concerns.
I appreciate it.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second, any further discussion on this item? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, next item?
This is discussion consideration of a request to fund the construction of a waterline extension from Westminster Road to Southeast Twenty-Eight Street along Roefan and Han Road in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. You have some information, we did have a request submitted by Ms. Teresa Scott at the last council meeting regarding the neighborhood's desire to have public water extended into this neighborhood. You've got some information behind the cover memo, aerial petition map, the petition, the actual petition itself, cost estimates and some additional information that we recently were provided from DEQ regarding test results in the area. And also a memo from the fire chief was handed out as well, so are there?
Ms. Scott, are you still present? You want to come forward and address council?
Okay, my name is Teresa Scott and I live at eleven two ninety Roefan Road. I spoke at the last council meeting regarding the urgent need for access to city water for the residents on Roefan and Han Road. A letter I wrote to Midwest City in two thousand and nine also addressed the following points regarding the need for access in our area. Enormous residential growth, applications of chemicals like fertilizers, herbicides and pesticides on nearby lawns. The addition of more homes in this area being constructed without access to sewage disposal requiring more septic systems. Fire hazards, for example, Oakwood East fires and the proximity to larger housing additions without having access to fire hydrants in our area. Knowing of this fire hazard, Midwest City required my husband and I to install smoke detector systems capable of being monitored in our new home we recently built. But the city has neglected the safety of the other residents in our area. In addition, an oil well and storage tank exists between Roefan and Twenty-Eight. That poses not only a fire hazard for homes near it, but also a source of pollution to the groundwater from leaks and spills. More and more homes and apartments are being built and more and more businesses are being expanded and added in our neighborhood area, causing fire and pollution risks to grow. I was at the dump the other day and noticed a sign stating that there's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine for improperly disposing of toxic pollutants. Yet you allow the neighborhoods all around our small area to spray their lawns affecting our groundwater supply. Even the city sprays along the roadside in our area annually. More traffic is adding more oil, gas and other pollutants that end up in our groundwater supply through drainage. Furthermore, we have just recently been made aware of not just one, but two sites that have been dumping cancer-causing toxic chemicals affecting the groundwater supply in this area for decades that are just within a quarter of a mile and one mile from our water wells. One of the sites also used radioactive materials. I spoke with Sarah Downard of DEQ who informed me that they have no way of knowing what could be contaminated and where it will spread with regard to the Eagle Industry contamination and the effects on the groundwater supply for nearby wells. She also noted that their water tests do not check for pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers and other sources of contamination. According to the plumbers I have spoken to, the plumbing in the areas, in this area is corroding due to the groundwater contamination for those on wells. We have been told there is no interest in this issue, however, our petition proves otherwise. As far as planning and providing water down Twenty-Eighth Street opposed to Roefan, there are more homes on Roefan and Han with interest in potential water connections resulting in revenues for the city than on Twenty-Eighth Street. Roefan is also closer to Oakwood East affecting more homes and putting the hydrants, fire hydrants on Roefan would provide a barrier between the oil well and storage tank and highly populated Midwest City neighborhoods and apartments. It's not good planning to put it on Twenty-Eighth instead of Roefan and Han. Also, with respect for cost, how much are the lives and safety of our families worth? Cancer seems to be a reoccurring theme for the women of Roefan Road. We have for many years and continue to pay taxes in this community along with fees for drainage on our streets that does not even exist. The city continues to provide access to city water for areas far more rural than ours with a far less safety risk and even to residents in Oklahoma City for their safety. The city seems to be quick to spend money on business utilities and ventures while neglecting their quest for the safety needs of their residents. Not only is this affecting our safety, but also our property values are at stake when the monthly front page of the news emphasizes this kind of neglect. Who wants to buy a home a quarter of a mile from one of the most toxic sites in the nation knowing their drinking water is unmonitored and untreated for contaminants that have been poured on the ground for decades? Therefore, we would like to reiterate the dire need for access to city water for the residents on Roefan and Han Road. And I would also like to, for the city to consider adding sewage access as it could be, likely be more cost effective to do while digging, constructing and repairing in that area. And also preventing further contamination from more septic tanks. Now, I have taken quite a bit of science classes. My son has a PhD in biochemistry, the other one is a master, has his master's in nuclear engineer. And we very well know this is a very hazardous situation, being this close to this kind of contamination. So we would like the city to do something about it.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if there's anybody else that's going to talk, but taking what she just said, if we completely ignored what she said and discounted everything she said, if we look at the last three sentences of that memo that we just got the fire chief from him, I don't see how we can approve this. They're talking about life, he's talking about life safety in this memo. Like I said, even if we discounted everything she said, him telling us that they'd have to lay several thousand feet of line in a relay pumping operation to support firefighting efforts out there, I think should be enough for us to approve it. Not, even like I said, even if we discounted everything she said, which I'm not, this memo alone is enough for me.
Dr. Dossi, sorry if I mispronounced your name, would you like to address council? While you're coming down, Ms. Scott, I would like to point out one thing. In reading your letter and reciting your letter, it makes it sound like the city of Midwest City has been totally negligent in ignoring your concerns. I would like to politely remind you that it was your call to me and your council person that started this ball rolling and that we are addressing the issue. Secondly, the second article that came out in the paper had to do with an issue that occurred in nineteen ninety-seven and we're currently in possession of a memo that came from Department of Environmental Quality stating that no further action was necessary on that site and the site was safe. And so combining the two issues is a little bit unfair. And we will continue, as I promised you, to work with you in every way we possibly can to get this corrected. So although I appreciate your efforts, it's your efforts that got us to this point. And I applaud anybody that gets involved with their government and make things happen. We have been receptive. Have we messed up before? We may have. But we are being receptive now and we're addressing it, so again, thank you for being here, but, you know, give us a little bit, just give us a little bit of credit, if you would. Doctor, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'm Aaron Dossi. I live actually at Turtlewood, about one or two blocks from the Eagle Industries site. I was thinking about renting it for my business and I toured the facility, I don't know if this is relevant information, but I was told that there were no toxic chemicals because I do research on insects and I wanted to make sure that we either, you know, swabbed and cleaned for any kind of contamination so our experiments wouldn't be affected. So, but they, maybe two weeks before the article came out in the, I believe, the Daily Oklahoman, I was told that there was no contamination there. I've been doing a little bit of homework for my mom on trichloroethylene. The solubility in water is surprising to me for that kind of compound, one point two grams per liter, which means that once it's in the water, it's in the water, it's not really going anywhere. This type of compound is known to be a carcinogen and it does concern me a lot. And just looking at the map of the neighborhood alone, it is a little confusing to me why to this date, water hasn't been brought to that street yet has been surrounded by water for a very long time, so I don't think it really should be that big a deal.
But water was offered to that street.
I'm sorry?
In two thousand and twelve, the city did offer water, tie-ins to all those houses. So to say that the city hasn't offered water out there is not correct.
When you say offered water, in what form?
They offered it off of the Twenty-Eighth Street to allow the residents to tie in off of the water. Okay.
Was that a mailer that was sent out?
There was only five people at the time that said that they wanted to extend and that let the project not be in pursuit because there wasn't enough interest in there. So the vast majority of the people said, no, they weren't interested in tying off to the water. So we had looked out there, we had done a survey to see who was interested. And there were only five residents at the time that were interested in that and it wasn't enough to make it feasible. So the city hasn't ignored this, the city hasn't not offered water. At the time, the majority of the residents didn't take the city up on the offer.
Okay, and I just moved back last year, so I haven't followed the entire thing. Although my understanding was a mailer was sent out and that's sometimes not the most effective way to gauge interest in a topic. But I think now, you know, what we have before us now is much more, much more urgent and I hope, and I'd also encourage the city to get some bids and get some quotes because you might be able to get. and I'd also encourage the city to get some bids and get some quotes because you might be able to get that cost number down.
We've already got the bid and we got the quote.
So, that's the best number? Good.
And let me add, let me add one thing throughout this whole course that kind of bothers me. You know, Eagles Industries, when we, when businesses come into a community, we as municipal government trust that they're going to follow the law. And apparently Eagle didn't. And for unbeknownst to anybody, they were dumping these chemicals and obviously if it had come to our attention, we would have addressed it immediately and heavy-handedly as well. But we had no idea until they've done, they've already closed down and some testing had occurred. So, again, we do have a responsibility to address the issue, but we also have, the Eagles Industries has a huge responsibility. Unfortunately, they've dissolved and no longer in business. So, that's another just point that I would like to add. We trust our businesses are going to follow suit and follow all the environmental recommendations and laws that are set forth, but sometimes they don't. But we are addressing this issue and that's why we're discussing it tonight. So, thank you guys for being here and again, thank you for being involved in your city government. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask Paul Streets to come up and just give a update on the DEQ testing, well testing that's gone on just for a matter of public record?
Sure. Paul Streets, Assistant Public Works Director, Utility Superintendent, and Liaison with the city and the DEQ. We have shared, they've shared the results with us and we do know that they had one positive for trichloroethylene, had 11,200 Roofan. But as a result, they decided to do follow-up tests. That first test was barely on the range of even being measured, it was very, very low. And they were concerned, they couldn't figure out why that it happened to show up in the groundwater. So, they did a follow-up test and this is according to Sarah Downard and Amy Britton from the DEQ. The follow-up test had a zero result. There was no... Yes, I, yes ma'am, but I'll just tell you, that's the result of, this is with the DEQ. I'm not here to tell you whether, I'm not going to give any opinion about the merit of the project. I'm simply here to tell you that as requested, they did a follow-up test. The follow-up test was on non-detect, which means there was no trichloroethylene in the groundwater at that location. And they have promised not only the city, but the residents that they're going to continue to test in that area to make sure that it's still safe to consume. And that was the only contaminant present at that particular site and the reason it was also listed on the national priorities list. That was the result of the second test.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion anyone want to address counsel? When you approach your podium, please give your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Sandra Dossi and I live on Arthur Drive, 1013 Arthur Drive in Midwest City. And I had a question. I was wondering if you polled people on 28th Street since 29th Hand and 28th and Roofan is just one big U and there are more houses on Roofan, why did you not go there? Why didn't you solicit all of the houses?
Because I wasn't here in 2012, I mean, I was a resident, but I wasn't a councilman. I'll let Billy answer that.
Yeah, I was part of that and we did survey the whole neighborhood by letter. And the results were that there just weren't enough people interested in tying onto the water line.
My sister.
At that point. This is a few years ago.
That was at a cost though, right?
Yeah, and that was at a $750 cost for the water meter.
Yes.
Which any new resident would have to do.
Right.
But there wasn't an interest to do that and so we couldn't justify spending the $300,000 for extending a line to people who didn't want it.
My question, my sister's lived on Roofan, she did just build another house, but she's lived there since the 90s. And I would think if there was something written in polling her, she would know that. Is it, have you been polled? Were you given an interest? Okay, that was my question.
Well, of course, I don't have all those numbers in front of me.
Let me interject something. Again, nobody on this council was present.
Right.
Okay, and we could go back and play what if and why didn't? And really, we need to move forward.
Yes.
And we are, we are addressing the issue in good faith and we're trying to correct the sins of our father, regardless of whatever their motivation was or lack of motivation, so.
Or lack of sin. There might not have been any sin in the past.
Well, I say that.
Yeah.
I say that.
The city and everybody did what they knew at the time. And I don't think blaming anybody other than Eagles Industries for this is appropriate.
I concur, but regardless of what the reason was, we do need to move forward. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes, we just want to bring a strong case and we're pretty close to the water plant up there, so hopefully it won't be too, thank you guys.
Sorry, I thought I had it on, sorry. The cost of the water meters out there. And I've seen the petition signed by a number of the residents from the area. My question is, do we have a commitment from X number of citizens that say this is what the cost is going to be to connect to the lines and we're willing to sign up and pay that? Because I think it's dangerous for us to jump out in spite of all the risk and spend a sum of money, you know, almost $350,000 without a firm commitment of if that line goes in, X residents are going to sign up and accept the water service. Ma'am, I'm just interested in this project. I mean, I'm just, I just want to know the answer to this question.
I think from evidence of the petition, we've got enough interest for people to hook on. But there's not going to be, there's not going to be enough people out there to hook on the line, recoup our costs. I mean, if that's what you're thinking, that's not going to happen.
No, but I mean, even, you know, I get they've committed, they would like the water to be provided, but you know, if the connectivity is cost prohibitive for a number of the residents out there, you know, why are we going to spend $350,000 and put water in for five residents type of thing? I mean, that's what I would like to know the answer to. Do we have a commitment for...
We have, we have in the past, if my memory serves me correct, we have structured a, something whereby the property owners would come in and put down a certain amount of money to demonstrate their commitment that they were going to tie on to the public line if it were installed. So, we could do something like that.
But right now, the way that this is structured for our discussion tonight and to vote on this issue doesn't have that as a prerequisite, correct?
No, ma'am, no.
But we can, we can request that that happen.
That's, this is, this is at your discretion.
Okay, so I'm going to put forward that request.
So, what percentage is normal?
Yeah, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna have to say, I don't recall exactly what kind of percentages we worked up. We'd have to just go back and take a look at how it was, how we came up with the arrangement.
Sir, go ahead with your name and address and...
My name's Robert Leahy. I live at 11025 Roofan. And I'd like to reiterate on the question you were talking about when they sent out the letter in 2012 to all the residents on Roofan. And my opinion here is that what is your percentage if you had a response to everybody that lived in that area between the three streets, whether or not you would have taken the initiative to put the lines down those streets? Is it 50%, 100%? What is it? It doesn't matter because I don't want an answer. My point is, is all you had to do was put the lines down the street. Let them be there, so if anybody wanted them, they can tap into them.
But that costs $340,000 to run water for people.
You've got more new houses, you've got new houses down here now. They've got no option, they don't have a choice, they've got to go well. They didn't get the letter because they didn't live there back then. So, the thing is, is the lines have to be put down the street, all three streets, and then it's up to the residents on the street whether or not they want to tap into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Burley. I live at 2541 Hand Road. I got the letter, I remember getting the letter, and I came up here and spoke to somebody. And eight of the other houses along that U are relatives of mine. I'm the only one who returned my letter, although everybody said they wanted water. Nobody wanted to sign the letter, mail it back in, or bring it up. But when Teresa came around, then everybody said, yeah, we want water. So, I know you keep saying there's no interest. There was interest. There was no interest in filling out the paper and returning it that you guys sent out, but...
But then, but that's not our fault.
No, no, I'm not saying it's your fault. When I came up...
I'm going to be as diplomatic as I can, but we've had accusations that we don't care thrown at us. But when we have sent it out and you admitted that eight of your family members got it and you're the only one that sent it in.
I'm the only one, right.
I think it's really unfair to the previous council who did this in 2012 and the staff who was here in 2012. And it's also unfair to this current council to be vilified for one, something we didn't do and two, a vast major, if your seven residents or family members had signed up on that, this might not even be a discussion right now.
You're right, and I told them.
But I'm just, and I get that, but I'm just trying to make a point very, very clear. Nobody up here was on the council in 2012.
Yeah.
The staff did the very best that they could to send the letter out.
But there's a new problem now. I'm sure that if this, if the Eagles Industries problem would have been then, there would have been more interest, more people would have been willing to pay the cost. I think it's only fair that there's a tie-in charge and even something to help offset a little bit of the cost. Myself...
I think that was already discussed.
But with the black eye, I mean, I think that you're going to have more of those people that would tie in, you would think. And it is a black eye to the property owners out there to have all this black cloud hanging over their head. Imagine if you was trying to be a property owner and wanted to sell. So, I'd like to see it move forward where we get the line in and maybe have the residents offset some of the cost.
When I came up here to tell them I want water and all of my relatives want water, they told me, you can't save what your relatives want, you can only save what you want. So, they didn't, you know, I couldn't say that for them. The other thing is, I've had Indian Health Services come out, Environmental Health, and they said that they would pay for anybody who had a CDIB card, which is a certified degree of Indian blood. Anybody who has a CDIB card, Indian Health Services will pay their hookup. So, you don't have to pay it and we don't have to pay it, Indian Health Services will do that for us. Also, they said that they would be interested in partnering with Midwest City. I don't know if he spoke to you, Adam, from Indian Health Services? He came up here and spoke to somebody and said, because I wanted water to come down Hand Road. And he said that they couldn't justify the cost for one Indian to come around, but if I could find some more Indians, then maybe they could justify the cost, but also that they would be interested in partnering and maybe helping pay some of that.
That wasn't a city person that said that.
No, Indian Health Services.
Okay, thank you.
Indian Health Services, no. But that was it.
Because they'll usually pay for a well in most cases.
They will pay for a well, but they said that, and they said that if you needed a well, they would come out and give you a new well.
But under this circumstance?
But they also said that if city water came through, that they would hook everybody that had a CDIB card, that they would pay to hook up.
That's good information.
I'm the only Indian. The rest of them aren't Indian. Yeah, there's other, I'm sorry, there's other people that have...
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Robin Beneski and we live on 11200 Roofan Road, Midwest City. We had our water tested two or three months ago initially and it came back positive for the trichloroethylene contaminant. And we had it retested late September, October, and we got another letter a few days ago saying it was negative. I thank y'all for your consideration to this matter. I have health issues and not quite sure where they came from. It's not from my mom, it's not from my dad. And some of the side effects of this contaminant or this organic compound is autoimmune disorders and kidney, bladder cancer, neurological liver cancer. And I just hope you'll consider putting lines out on our road. I think there's a lot of people interested in this now. I mean, back then, when you polled us in 2012, I'm sure a lot of us didn't want the city water. It kind of has that funny taste of bleach to it, you know? And we like our well water, I brag to everybody, come fill your water jugs up, our water is awesome, you know? But I just worry about our kids, two of our kids are here this evening, and their health in the future. And I think a lot of people would be interested in hooking up to the city lines now since the Eagle Industries contamination occurred. And just wanted to say thank you and I'm not really too keen on the idea of holding us to like a monetary cost of, you know, like, okay, we're going to put down this down deposit to show our interest. But if that's what has to be done, then I'm sure a lot of us will do that.
Well, I'm just not keen on, I mean, it's my suggestion, so I'm just not keen on, you know, we're going to jump out and spend $350,000 without some, you know, dedicated commitment of, there's a, there is a very good reason to do it besides just, you know, you've got 33 signatures on the petition, I counted. That's in excess of $10,000 per signature on the petition right now for the cost to lay this line based upon the estimate we have. So, you know, I understand your feeling, but at the same time, everybody who sits on this horseshoe is supposed to be good stewards of the public fisc. And so, you know, every dollar that we take for one project means one less dollar we could put to another project, so.
I think for saving people's lives, that's worth anything.
So, your address is 11200 Roofan?
Correct.
So, yours is the one that we've got the copy of, the DEQ.
Yes.
Had tested in September and then in October it came back and had negative correction.
Correct, which is kind of strange to me, but...
So, how many is in that resident area? How many?
In on our street?
Yes.
Approximately, I'd probably say 50 to 75 people, if at least.
I think there's about 30 houses in the neighborhood, between 30 and 40 houses that are not serviced by public water. Many of those houses would be, would receive some form of fire protection through the lane of some hose line, but not the entire neighborhood.
Can we, if we were to do with Susan's idea, and it's a certain dollar amount, it would be, could we put something in there that if you refused to tie into the city services, but later you wanted to, it's going to cost you a heck of a lot more?
Well, I guess my suggestion here is, why don't you let us come back and frame a proposal?
But could we do that to give you an incentive to sign up now? It's going to cost you X, but it will cost you X times more if you decide six months, a year, 10 years from now that you want to sign, you want to do it.
I think that's, that is purely within your prerogative. I think what we would do is want to identify this geography and even take it to either a resolution or an ordinance so that we would spell those things out so that it became ratified and we would have something, you know, five years from now and we have staff changes that we've got some documentation behind why we're saying what we're doing.
Okay, and for future owners, could we have something that was attached to the deed so they would know that these people were offered to tie in and they didn't? And now if you tie in at a later date, it's going to cost you X because they didn't do it?
Well, I mean, anything can be done. I mean, we could craft a document that we, I'm going to have to refer to...
We need to encourage as many people to do it. And by costing less today than it would tomorrow, I think that's a good way to encourage people to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I want everyone to understand that we don't, we don't, we're a big city. mean, we're a big city, uh, in, uh, in comparison to many other cities, but, but we have, uh, we have budgetary concerns and, and obligations that we have to meet. We, uh, create a budget every year, we identify what projects we're gonna do every year, and, and, and we fund those things. So, you, you're kinda catching us in the middle of the fiscal year, so, um, uh, we, I wish I could go down into the basement and, and turn the printing machine on, the printing press, and create, create some money, but we, we don't have that. So, at some point in time, we're gonna have to go through the exercise of actually finding the money to do this project, um, and it may take a little while. It may not be, you know, we've got this, we don't have this money si- sitting around. We're gonna have to either change, as, as, as the, the council person said, we're gonna have to either move some money from one project to lay one project in order to fund this, or we're gonna have to do it in a su- in, in, in a subsequent fiscal year, when additional money becomes available.
So, can we take no action on this, so you can bring it forward in two weeks with, with those percentages and everything else?
Yeah, I, I'd really like a month, to be honest with you, because we're, um, with, with Thanksgiving, we're gonna lose two days, and, and it's gonna take us a little while to put this together.
So, the first meeting in December?
Yes, sir.
Just so you, you all understand, we're not saying no.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, 'cause we're not, we're not turning our backs and saying we're not gonna help you.
True.
There's some, there's some logistics that we have to look at.
Yes, I work for the government as well, and understand that, the budgets-
Nothing moves fast.
Yeah, and, uh, I kinda feel like, you know, how come we can't ask the, the government who knew about this years ago for some sort of money? And I know that's kind of tricky, but, um, they knew about this, and I'm sure you could save the city of Midwest City three hundred thousand dollars if this wouldn't have occurred, or had been addressed a while ago.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, I don't, I don't think they would jump out because it is in furnishing, you know, um, water, which is part of our, our obligations. But again, I mean, it's, Eagle Industries has become on the list for Super Fund site, and so that's, uh, it's in line, i- it's in line to get federal funding to come down, you know? And ma'am, by all means, if you have some information that you can share as far as, with regard to your information about the tribes paying connectivity fees that would help some of the folks in the neighborhood, um, by all means. By all means.
Or, actually, Billy's probably the best person to give this part to you, and Susan as well, if she wants to, but Billy's department, and Patrick will be handling that, right, Billy?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. One other thing that I heard you guys mention, there's not very many houses out there. We can't have very many houses out there, because we have to have an acre, or we can't have a well and septic tank on the same. But if city water came in, you know, my daughter would like to build next door to me. I know my brother-in-law lives next door to me, his son would like to build next door to him. They can't now, because we don't have city water. But there could be more houses if we had city water.
And Billy, just so I'm clear, the estimate that we have for the, like, three thirty-nine, it does not include sewer, right? It's just to lay the water-
The sewer's an additional three hundred and ninety thousand, so, I mean, I, I know-
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page, because that was the question raised by, I'm sorry, I don't remember which one of you ladies said about adding sewer in also, and that's not-
They go in separate, they go in separate, they're, they're not laying the same-
It would be totally separate line.
Totally separate, because they're not laying the same hole, so laying them at the same time wouldn't say this is-
Sorry, I just wanted to get that clarifying.
And, uh, and not in the same place either, so, um, I, I, okay, the chair would, uh, is there any further discussion?
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to point out, now, these folks, a lot of them probably have recently put in water wells, and possibly doesn't work to their pumps and their wells, so, you know, two, even though the city's laying the main line, they're still gonna have, they're gonna be out some expense for a, uh, yard line, so, you're kinda getting hit.
Be an expense to tie on, there'll be an expense to buy the meter, and then there'll be an expense to, to, to make that connection from the city main, which will be located within the public right-of-way along the street, and, um, uh, to the house, and there's probably a decent chance that those, that that connection may be going out the back, uh, of the house to the, to the well, or to the side, so, that'd be a little bit of additional, uh, plumbing work that will go along with that, so, yeah, there'll be a cost to the, to the property owner.
Yes, sir.
Well, would you be able to give them a estimate when we start looking at everything?
I, I think it, it's, it's, I think, that would be, um, I, I'd hate to get into that, I think we would just-
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. So, they would be able to look more into logistics of it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I, I would, uh, just caution against putting a, a financial requirement on the citizens to express interest, so that, yeah, I heard some discussion about, okay, well, let's say that if you, if you want water, put your money where your mouth is, and say that you'll, you'll lay down a certain amount of money, or if you don't, that's saying you're not interested, that's, I don't, I don't think that would be right, um, especially considering certain circumstances around this particular urgent need for water. I don't, I think people should be able to express interest and say that they need water, and I think it's a right, and it should be addressed regardless of people putting up money.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to call for a vote to table this? No action, call for a vote, no action.
To continue it.
To continue, call for a vote, continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
My name is Charles Thompson from ten- oh, ten-four-hundred Northeast Fourth. I just wanna point out that this problem is not the city's making, I mean, Eagle Industries is responsible for this, and another solution to these citizens' problems would be probably an R O filtration system. Costs between five, ten thousand dollars for a whole house system, so, uh, if it's not in the budget this year, and they want something to remedy that very quickly, they could actually get an R O system, we wouldn't have to run water lines out there at all, so that's just another solution. Reverse osmosis.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Okay, I do have a call for a vote on the motion to table. I have a motion.
Second.
Motion to continue until the first December meeting, right?
I have a motion to continue, a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I do wanna make, uh, make sure that it gets back, it's on the first thing on the docket for December. All right. Any extensions? Motion carries. Yes, ma'am.
I second it. Pat issued it.
Next item.
Discussion, consideration of approving, passing and approving a resolution and proclamation authorizing the calling and holding of a primary election on February thirteenth, twenty eighteen, if necessary, and a general election, if necessary, on April third, twenty eighteen, in all wards of the city of Midwest City, County of Oklahoma, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of electing wards one, three, and five council members and the mayor, an at-large position, enumerating the qualifications for those offices, and establishing the filing period.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Extention, motion carries, next item.
This is discussion, consideration of reviewing and/or approving the recommendations made by the Regional Animal Shelter Council Committee members at the special meeting held on October twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, and take further action if necessary. Mr. Lyon, there you are, he's hiding in the corner.
But note, our sister city, Dell City, just passed their sales tax.
Well, good for them.
So, they're gonna be able to hire and staff appropriately.
Absolutely.
So, Mayor and Council, this is a agenda item from, um, Police Chief Clabbs, and, I think, um, the reason I'm presenting the item one is, uh, the chief is off with his, with his wife, but, um... Turned it off. So, on Friday night, I sent out a memo to the council, kinda going over what the ins and outs of a multi-beneficiary trust. So, that's what the committee, um, considered, is how do we move forward with a animal shelter is, in, in relations to the general obligations bond, and, and in, um, what manner would we allow the other cities, or would we try to, um, ask the other cities to be engaged in a multi-beneficiary trust, or to approve a multi-beneficiary trust? So, we've had several meetings with Forest Park, Choctaw, Nakoma Park, Harrah Jones, and I think actually Spencer came to one of the meetings. All but Spencer have current agreements with the city. We, um, as we got down to the end for the committee, Chief Clabbs and the animal shelter really, supervisor, really did not, uh, they really did not wanna move forward with the trust, and the reason for that is because the multi-beneficiary trust would actually own and operate the animal shelter, and that would take that out without, take it away from our control, I guess, basically. And so, um, the pros and cons, the pros of, of doing a multi-beneficiary trust is that by a two-thirds vote from each council, they're gonna join the trust, and by another two-thirds vote, they're gonna end debt themselves to build an animal shelter and operate the animal shelter. Each council would then appoint a member to the trust, who would become the board of trustees, and they would, they would operate the animal shelter. And so, um... The committee, with that knowledge, and with staff recommendation not to move forward with the multi-beneficiary trust, or doing a regional animal shelter, um, asked me to, to, um, review with the rest of the council, the pros and cons of a multi-beneficiary trust or a regional animal shelter, and so that's what I'm here to do, is to go over that and answer any questions. Talking to Councilman Byrne, Councilman Eads, um, who else, were you on that, Sean? I can't-
If, if you don't remember, then I wasn't there.
Okay. I think Sean was there. But, um, we have a lot of committees right now going, it's hard to stay up with who's on what. But, we discussed building a shelter that, and we being Midwest City, building a shelter that meets our population needs, say, twenty, twenty-five years from now. That's as long as you expect a animal shelter to last anyway, before you're gonna have to do a major renovation or build a new one. And so, what we discussed is, is building a shel- go ahead and build our own shelter through our, a general obligation bond, that the regional trust would not be able to use a general obligation bond, they'd have to use a revenue bond, which is really, I mean, there's, there's nothing wrong with using revenue bonds, but in our case, it would be a general obligation bond, which is an ad valorem bond versus pledging dollars out of whatever source the city wishes to pledge them for a, a revenue bond. But if we build a shelter, it's gonna be built to, to deal with Midwest City's growth in, in proportion for, say, twenty years. So, there'll be, there'll be excess capacity to continue having these one-year relationships with these cities that we have now, in our local agreements, 'cause they're only good for a year, so we can't really, you know, you really can't end debt them for fifteen or twenty years, or end debt them into building the shelter. So, it, it leaves us with, once again, having the same sort of arrangements that we have now, which is these inter-local agreements. Now, I think that the staff would like to engage our finance director and, and, um, look at, make sure that we're costing these, these inter-local agreements correctly, make sure we're charging the correct amounts. I think that, that was a little bit, one of the staff, that was one of the recommendations from the committee, is that, um, we needed to do a better job of, of how that price is costed. The second piece of this is that the committee, um, felt like, if we do get to a point where we run out of capacity for this animal shelter, it's gonna be Midwest City's, and we have four, five, six other cities that are growing also, and their needs will grow over the next five, ten, fifteen years, that we would look to build our shelter in a manner where we can add on to it. And if these cities wish to continue, at that point, when we run out of capacity, that if the other cities wish to continue for us being a long-term solution for them, that we would, um, allow them to somehow bond or fund additional add-on capacity to the shelter. Is that a fair, fair assessment? Go ahead, Mr. Byrne.
Before we start, I know one of the big issues was, nobody wants to cut anybody off, and there was never any discussion through what he just told you to cut anybody off, because, uh, there was several meetings with the other cities, and it was very obvious from the be- the meetings that these people are looking to us to help them come up with a solution, and they're very supportive of what we wanna do. But I wanna reiterate what Tim said, the issues were the funding mechanism, and how this was gonna operate, and if, if we do it like he just explained it, we would maintain control of it. It would still be a Midwest City shelter, and it would be run by our staff, and after looking at the financial concerns, the difference in the bonds, and getting other jurisdictions involved, getting their votes, setting up the trust, there's, there's actually a trust in place now that they offered the hospital deal out, Choctaw.
Yeah, I was just an example of what a multi-beneficiary trust would look like for, as a regional concept.
But, we, we looked at it, at, like Tim said, at twenty years. We build it for what we think Midwest City will need in twenty years, over the next twenty years, which would be adequate enough to take in and help these other cities. And there, there are four, whatever it takes to make it work. It would be a little bit hard to get the bonds, for the way I got it, would, there were some of the cities that were reluctant to getting into the bonding deal, because they don't wanna go up against the school systems.
Plus the fact that they just weren't comfortable with long-term financing.
But, the solution that we came up with, and we brought it back to y'all, because this doesn't need to die, this needs to go on. We need to develop, we need to start working on what we're gonna do to put on the bond issue. But it would, then my recommendation from the meetings that I was at, that we, Midwest City, continue with the committee that's formed, reach out to some other people in the community that are involved in the animal welfare business, and that we develop the overall shelter in Midwest City. Like Tim said, we look at the cost, the actual cost, with Christie involved in it, what it costs us to actually take in these animals from these other cities, 'cause we're not really sure that we have an adequate grasp of what it actually costs us to take in Jones and Choctaw's animals, and we need to do a better job of getting that. We don't wanna do it for free, we don't wanna lose money, but we, you know, we, there, there has to be a halfway point. The impression I got from these other jurisdictions is they're gonna be on board with us, they're gonna support it, and the idea of expanding this, building it in such a way that we can expand it at a later date. So, councils down the road aren't dealing with, if those knuckleheads had built it big enough, or if they designed it, all it would've taken is to knock a wall out and put more area for the animals in, 'cause that's really what you need. If you, if you look at the shelter from Norman, that, that they, we haven't gone down there, we've seen their plans, you have the basic stuff in there, you have an adoption area, you have some training rooms, you have the administrative deal. The main thing that's gonna grow is where the animals are housed.
That's the kennel space.
Kennel space. So, if we build it, we develop it in Midwest City, we put these key resources in there, like an, of, of, an adoption area that's friendly to the people coming in, uh, an educational system for the people, uh, training rooms, whatever else that we need, a little area for minor medical stuff, we can build it, we'll get the support from the other cities, that we won't be building, uh, we won't be tying these other cities into trying to get a bond, because one of the issues I was gonna have was if, if we had passed the bond and these other people didn't, then we're done. We're, we're gonna have to start all over again. So, we take the lead, we develop it, we build it, we control it, and then we work with these other cities on keeping it a fair, adequate price. And, and I would agree, the only reason that we, if we own it, we can't... We can't contract with Choctaw, or Dell, any of the other cities, at a length of other than three hundred and sixty-five days. So, if they came in and said, "Look, we wanna go in on this with you, and we're going to pledge this," it would just be good for a year, and if a council four years from now said, "You know what, we're not gonna give Midwest City this money anymore," they're done, and we're left holding the bag. Not saying that they would, but you never can tell what a future council would do. So, that's, that's the- So, that's, that's the main reason that we're looking at keeping the control over this, while telling each of these cities, like Pat said, "We're going to take care of you, we're going to take care of you at an adequate cost that doesn't lose us any money, but also doesn't make us any money." And, I think the best idea, I don't know if it was yours or who's ever, habit to wear if Choctaw one day, or Nakoma Park, said, "You know, it makes more sense to, they've got the land, we can build a wing onto it, twenty, whatever they want to do, they could come in and do it." And it would cost them less money in the long run to do that, too.
Yeah. It would not be prudent on our part to try to, to try to build a shelter big enough for all eastern Oklahoma County and not build to tie them into financing. And that, that just does not appear that that was going to happen with these communities, even if we wanted to go down that road. I didn't feel any commitment from the other cities that they were going to engage in.
Will it be challenged?
Yeah. They wanted to, they want to continue doing it on a yearly, on a one-year basis.
This is just me talking, Sean and Susan have, I think they have their own opinions, but I think it's pretty close to mine, is that we, we asked that it come back to you because we felt like that wasn't a decision that just the three of us could make, and we were looking for some direction from the rest of you. Is, is this what is adequate with you? And if it is, we're going to proceed with trying to work through, coming up with a plan for it.
Yeah, through our general.
And the other thing I want to point out is, back this summer, we said that if the cities weren't going to work with us, the, the outlying cities, that we were going to cut their services off on December thirty-first. These cities are still working with us, these cities are still wanting to be a part of this. We're going to have to, I think, take another vote in December, because we have voted to terminate those contracts. So, we're going to have to take another vote on the first, we only have one meeting in December. We don't have one on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, we need to make sure.
So, we're going to take one of the very first, so we may need to make sure it's on the agenda.
We will.
Extending to these cities that are, and they have been working with us, to keep the contracts going, but we need Christie to look at some of the numbers. And I think, this is my opinion, we stick to the dollars that they were contracted to last budget. And Christie gets a couple of months, don't you love it when we throw work on you? To figure out when we're doing the new budget, what we're going to charge the other cities going for. Yeah, it puts a little bit of a kink in our budget maybe, but at the same time, we did contract with them, we said we would do it for a year, they budgeted. You guys can disagree with me, it just takes four votes, but I think we stick to what we told them specifically, since they've been working with us in good faith.
Okay.
I have a comment and follow-up about that. I may be the minority view, but that's okay. My concerns still rest with the issue of us taking in animals, given our current size of our shelter from other communities, which is causing complications with regard to the total number of animals that we can house in our shelters, which also often leads to having to euthanize extra animals. So, if we are going to go back and state now that we are going to continue to contract with these adjacent and neighboring municipalities, then I think that we also need to have an idea of what the numbers are that Adrian and his staff believe that would be appropriate, so that if we are going forward to continue contracting with those, those municipalities are, are limited perhaps to a certain number that they can provide to us.
Well, anytime.
Well, I understand that they already have a limit contracted with each cities.
No, they don't, but what our contract, correct me if I'm wrong, but our contract allows us, if we are at capacity or close to it, we can turn those other cities' animals away. Is that correct?
Yes.
Who, who said yes?
I don't know the answer to that personally, because I'm the multi beneficiary trust guy. This isn't one of my operational departments.
And, and I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, you had your hand over your mouth, I couldn't see your lips moving. So, I, I, that we can turn them away when we get too full.
Well, that was not the understanding that I had previously with Adrian about them being able to drop animals off, like Friday night, if they show up with animals at five o'clock, you know, they can do that, and then we're over capacity type of thing. Perhaps I'm misunderstanding that, but I would just ask that if we're going to push to a vote to extend or renew contracting with these other municipalities to take in their animals, that we figure out what our carrying capacity is and be respectful of that.
I think Adrian could probably, and the chief could get those numbers, too.
Yeah, we're going to have to, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just asking for that, if we're going to set this on December twelfth or whatever.
Without Brandon or Adrian here, I can't really answer that question.
Yeah.
We'll look into it.
Can you not hear? Are you, are you saying you want to speak, Katie, or you can't hear?
Yes.
Oh, no, you have to sit down, you have a no-you shirt on.
Actually, that's why I was going to ask for you to come up and talk, since you're, this is your.
I was just going to reference the packet that you all have online tonight for your agenda, and I know you're probably referencing.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, they all talk to me like I'm family. Katie Hawk, seven oh one South Timber Lane. Are you referencing financials or are you referencing physical animal numbers?
Physical animal.
In your packet, it shows those percentages, eight percent is not Midwest City, ninety-two point something percent is Midwest City animals. It's small. That's really all I have to say. I, and yes, they can turn away an animal if they're full. It's difficult to do that, though. You know, that's something I know that they struggle with, just to say no, because what are they going to do, release it back on the streets, or, and they don't have the facilities to take care of them.
To take care of them, right.
So, that's, that's, that, that's the hard part, is actually saying no. But, it is only eight percent.
Don't sit down. Hey, you're the, you're the animal activist.
I'm, I'm just a concerned resident, sir.
Okay, well.
Not big on labels.
Okay. As a concerned resident.
Yes, sir.
You've heard this discussion.
Yes.
What input do you have for it?
May I bring up my notes, if you don't mind? First would just simply be eight, eight percent is, is a pretty low number, so I wouldn't let that completely direct it unless, you know, the shelter manager advised otherwise. Again, I always highly recommend going to Adrian, he's the king expert for you all to reference. And then the other one, just as a concerned resident, this is my concern from the very beginning, and that is, you all already made the commitment to these other communities in June, or, excuse me, like last February for this fiscal year, right? So, I wasn't keen on you all putting the December thirty-first, you know, cutting them in half to begin with. So, keeping those intact through the end of fiscal year seventeen, I think is the right thing to do, is the most respectful thing to do. They've already planned their fiscal year budgets around those contracts. I, I wouldn't want anyone to put Midwest City in the same predicament. I don't think you all would either. If you get down to it, now we're talking about, we're arguing about dollars per animal and what we may or may not be losing. You all just admitted, you don't even know what those exact numbers are, and you're holding other cities accountable for it.
Well, but that's why I said that I think that we need to, we need.
I agree, I'm agreeing with you, yes.
I'm not used to that.
I'm not either, because you're the one who actually originally proposed this. So.
I know.
I know, I was proud of you.
Do you, do you understand that we are not closing that door?
Yes, I do completely understand, I'm just advocating for, for those, for those items. Just saying, just kind of reiterating.
Remember, I told you when I came out there, make sure you listen to everything, not just.
I did, I did listen. And I, I'm just reiterating the importance, my personal values, how I see in regards to our contractual agreements with the city, and honoring those, and just knowing that it is only eight percent in regards to the number of animals that come from other communities. So, just, just deciding factors. I, I, one more tidbit in regards to my opinion, fully owned and operated by Midwest City, all the way. Yes, I completely agree with that, I think that's the most sustainable approach. I understand what you all are saying in regards to not planning around other communities, I understand that. If you're planning in regards to a twenty-five-year approach, you know, I read the reports in what Adrian recommended, the space capacity issues with the two communities, Virginia and somewhere else that he contacted and spoke with at length, and, you know, that was both of their number-one recommendations and issues, what would they have done differently? And that was made it bigger. So, Tim, you know, that's absolutely a huge concern, so doing it for Midwest City with a twenty-five-year approach in regards to population growth, I think is very smart, but it's, I think it's definitely most sustainable if, if we can be operating that ship.
I used to have one more comment for Katie. If you'll change your allegiance to OSU and start cheering from, from now on, I would want to recommend naming a room with that after you.
The chair will entertain emotion.
Well, the way, the way I see it, we've got one of two things we can either do. We can either continue this particular item, bring it back to council next month with the caveats that were discussed here today, as far as keeping the contracts intact through the remainder of the fiscal year, and readdressing them, going with the current limits that we already have set with our animal control director. Or, like I said, we can just table it and bring it back with those additions, or we can make, I can entertain a motion with those additions.
I don't think we need to table it, Mr. Mo. Because the reason that we came to you was to continue with the committee.
I was giving you your options. Those are our two options, we can either table it, or we can make a motion with those caveats.
You table it, you can't make any changes.
Correct. If you table it, you can't make changes. If you continue it or you take no action, but.
Once again, I'm giving you two options, either make a motion with those caveats, or, I guess, continue it.
Okay, I would make a motion that this council, the first motion is that this council has given the committee the direction to proceed with the developing, the plans for a Midwest City owned and operated animal shelter to be developed. That would be my, the first motion.
And, are we going to, how about?
That's motion number one, we have to do.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, I have, can we not make a continual motion, Mr. Attorney, with, or do we have to move on each motion? I would move on each motion.
Yeah, we, so we've got discussion at this point.
Okay, I have a motion, is there any discussion on this motion? I have a motion, do I have a second?
You, you have a motion and a second.
All in favor indicating, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Objection?
Okay, now, I believe we need a second motion, or will that motion be in next month's agenda where we revert back to our old contracts?
I think that needs to be next month, because that's not on the agenda.
Right. It, we'll, we'll bring, we'll need to bring all those contracts back to you all to re-
So, that we can continue.
To continue those contracts under, under the, the current financial arrangement.
So, right now, the motion that we've made in past is to give Susan Ead, who's the chairman, Sean Reed, who's the vice chairman, the ability to continue on this committee to develop, to reach out, to make sure that we, as a group, plus the outside people that are going to be involved in it, to develop the plans to present to the council at a future date.
And, and, and also to advise the, the adjac-, our, our partners, our adjacent communities, where we, where we have landed on this.
And Christie, you're welcome for more work.
Yeah, yeah.
The motion next will be to extend the contract.
I think the mayor was trying to do it all together tonight.
But, we can't extend the contract, this is not on the agenda.
I get a rule by attorneys all the time, so. So, are we done with this discussion?
Well, I think, I think we are.
Yeah.
Next discussion item.
This is discussion consideration of appointing two new members to the Midwest City Tree Board for three-year term ending November tenth, twenty twenty.
Discussion.
We need two names.
I, on behalf of Ward One, I submit the name of Teresa Mortimer to be in addition to the Tree Board on behalf of Ward One.
Okay, and I'd like to continue, hopefully to be some of the first to discuss it with the person that is interested in the Tree Board. I have not had a chance to get in contact with them, but I mentioned it to the person. They said they was interested, but then I don't have all the information to give to you tonight.
We can bring it back, Mr. Mo.
Yes, thank you.
So, we've got nomination for one member.
Move to nominate Teresa Mortimer to the Tree Board.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstacles? Motion carries. Next item?
Discussion consideration of appointing a new member to the Midwest City Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term ending November tenth, twenty twenty.
And, again, on behalf of Ward One, I would move to appoint Amy Otto of five fifteen East Harmon, Midwest City, to the BOG.
This is the Midwest City.
I'm sorry.
Park and Recreation Board.
Sorry. I just went where I wanted to go, I'm sorry. I apologize, I retract that.
So, do we have a, do we have an appointment for the Park and Recreation Board?
That's another, that we can, we'd like to, well, actually, Susan said that she may have someone. It's, Susan and I, it's one in five, we would at least like to have someone from one of those particular wards, because we have a substantial amount of people in some wards, and I think it's good to have representation in all wards for the Park and Recreation. So, I, I believe it's only one position for the Park and Recreation.
And this is a board that is appointed by each individual, or recommended by each individual?
Mayor.
The big word.
Mayor.
It's the mayor's rec-, okay. I'm having problems with big words tonight. That's quite, quite.
Okay, we, I think, I think what I hear is we need to bring this back at the next meeting.
Yes.
So, we'll, we'll continue, how about a motion to continue this, this item?
Motion.
Well, it will. You can take no action.
We can take no action, or we can take, continue it.
Motion continue to the December meeting.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Objection? The motion carries. Next item?
Okay, this is discussion consideration of reporting on the status, condition, progress, or recommendations concerning the latest evaluation of Heritage Park Mall located sixty-eight oh one East Reno. Staff has advised Mr. Barini of this agenda item. In the event he wishes to report or provide to council any additional information, otherwise the city attorney will provide some additional, a short additional report on this agenda item. So, Mr. Barini, is there anything you want to, want to share with the council, if you want to come up and give us your name and address? I know you were here at the Planning Commission meeting, so.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure you got.
Yes, well, my name is Ahmed, the last name Barini, I live on one forty-five oh one East Northwestern Avenue, Edmond, Oklahoma, and I'm the owner of Heritage Park Mall. And, from the, I'm just going to go over some of the improvement we did since the last meeting we had here. We finally, we got four hundred thousand square foot of roof done, which is the body of the mall. So, we are leak-proof on the body of the mall. We already started inside the mall doing sheetrocks, and at the same time, we also constructed three firewalls, which was, one was between the Heritage Park Mall and a life church, the other one was between Heritage Park Mall and a Nakoma Ward. There are two walls over there, and we also constructing a wall which goes in about a halfway through the mall, to divide the mall almost in half, so we could finish up one side of the mall, then go back, and, and so that way we could get a certificate of occupancy for the site, which we are going to open to the public. At the same time, we are also going over some of the stores over there, which they were in a bad shape. We tore up a lot of the sheetrocks, which was water damage, we tore out a lot of the ceiling tiles, which was water damage, a lot of the carpet, which was water damaged. So, we are doing that at the same time. So, so far, the sheetrock on a, on a common areas of the ceilings, this, finally, well, we work seven days a week, we got the sheetrock on a common areas is done. We are doing it taping and bedding right now, which the taping and bedding should be finished up by next week. Then the following week, we're going to do texture and paint for a, for a. Then the following week, we're gonna do texture and paint for a, for a common area of the mall. At the same time, we are also removing more bad sheetrocks and ceiling tiles and so on. And at the same time, we also hired an engineering firm to make sure the, the, our building is safe to the public. And if there is any recommendation with them, we will repair or replace whatever the, the structure of engineer will tell us to do. At the same time, we also working with O G and E, putting a new transformer, which gonna operate the north half of the mall. Everything, all the paperwork is done. We are waiting for them to install the new transformer. They said it could take up to, up to December twenty ninth. So every, every other day, we are contacting them, say rush, 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 to see what happened. I guess that's it.
Did you say the transformer is on the north, the north half?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because the, because the mall is divided in two section, which was originally like this from nineteen seventy-eight, I guess. One transformer runs, runs from middle of a mall towards the south side of a mall, which is the front of the mall by the, by the Reno. The other one runs from the middle of the mall to the backside of the mall, which is the north side of the mall. And the one, when, whenever they were putting the new transformer for front of the mall, they saw there was a leakage on a transformer in the back end of the mall. So the O G and E took those out about two years ago, and they were supposed to come back with it. And I called them then, they said, well, we are in the middle of a winter season, and we have a lot of bad weather. As soon as the bad weather's finished up, we'll be right there to put the new one in there. Guess what? That didn't happen. So now we are forcing them to put the new transformer in there, so. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Susan.
Sorry. I saw that you were undertaking a campaign to get tenants into the building, and I was curious if you have any-
Yes, ma'am.
-tenants contracted?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We, we are sending our L O I from the middle of December to the first part of January, so we are getting that back hopefully by, sometime in January. Hopefully by that time, we have electricity to the, to the north side of the mall, so we could proceed.
Have you got all the ceiling tiles up throughout the mall?
No, sir. I do not.
Because that, is that the one area that's, the, the, fire alarms don't work correctly with the suppression unless those are in there?
We, we are working at the body of the mall. For us, the, from our conversation with the city of Midwest City, as long as we are, because each person, when they move in, each person like to remodel the place to fit their need.
But you've gotta have the ceiling tiles in place, is my, you've got now a working fire suppression system. If the ceiling tiles were in place, and you're shaking your head back there, you would get an occupancy, an ability to be, correct? I'm looking at you, I don't know why.
There, there are multiple issues.
I know, but that's one of, but, but my thought is, and I'm not, I've never remodeled a building before, but if you have a working fire system that won't work because you don't have the proper ceiling tiles in place, and you're putting your money in to make it nicer and bring it back up to place, yet you're leaving it unprotected from the fire suppression system, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, from, from the conversation we had with the city of Midwest City, since the body of the mall consists of several, about eighty-eight stores, or each individual store's by law of Midwest City, they are supposed to have a certificate of occupancy for every single one of those stores. From my conversation with the city, they said as long as we make the common area to make sure all the sheetrocks are in, to make sure there is no space between the fire, the fire sprinklers, and everything's okay, then we could get a certificate of occupancy for a body of the mall.
Phil, just as there's no misunderstanding, is that, is what he is relating to us? His, his understanding of, of what the conversation is, is that a correct understanding?
Well, I was part of that conversation. I, what I'm going, the plan to do tonight is to update you on the legal process regarding violations at the mall and what the status of that here is.
Go ahead, Phil.
What we have, Fire Marshal cited. Usually, usually everyone tells me not to speak into it, because it's too loud. The Fire Marshal, back during the summer, issued five citations of ordinance violations to the mall, which were addressed in court and fines were paid. The Fire Marshal went back out there September eighth to see what the status of those violations were, and they were continued. They had not been resolved. So the Fire Marshal issued five more citations, four being a violation of those same ordinances, and then there's an additional citation for failure to obey the direction of the Fire Marshal to remove materials and to resolve those, those problems that were not done. In that, those charges, there was an arraignment where a plea of not guilty was entered for Mr. Barini. It was set for a trial. The municipal court had a trial on those issues with testimony from Mr. Barini and also testimony from the Fire Marshal. And the court found Mr. Barini to be guilty of all those violations. And as a result of that, those, that guilty verdict, the judge ruled that until the violations are corrected and an occupancy permit is obtained, he's been ordered to vacate the premises because he's in violation of those ordinances. Mr. Barini filed a motion to vacate that order by the judge and to reconsider the ruling. The judge requested that the city respond to that. The city has filed a response to that motion, and now that is back to the judge. And so we're in a pattern now, we're just waiting for a ruling from the judge regarding the motion to vacate his order and to reconsider the issues. So that's the present status at this point in time.
Mr. Anderson, I, I have a, kind of a small little problem, or I have a question very much. Do you bring every single ticket which was issued by your, by the city of Midwest City in front of a city council?
Your what?
Do you bring the city tickets in front of a city council? I thought the city tickets are designed to go to the court of law while the judge discusses whether you're guilty, you're not guilty, you pay the fine, or you, or the case get dismissed. And the thing you're talking about right now, it is very, as far as I'm concerned, is very premature, because my lawyer filed to vacate the judgment.
Mr. Barini, can I?
Yes, sir.
So we don't get sidetracked?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson is simply fulfilling the wishes of city council, that the city council be updated on the progress of the mall-
Yes, sir.
Every quarter. This isn't a court of law. We're not rendering judgment.
Yes, sir.
Nor could we if we even wanted to. So, Mr. Anderson is just fulfilling the wishes of the council. We, again, appreciate your input. We continue to, to value your opinion, and we'll continue to work with you and try to resolve some of these issues. And again, that was the only reason that those brought up, he's following the wishes of the mayor and the city council to be updated quarterly. So with that being said, is there any further information that you would like to impart to the city council?
Yes, sir. Well, I would appreciate you, mayor, and, and the member of city council, and we done a lot of improvements since the last meeting we had here.
Yes, sir.
We, we had numerous inspectors stop and just take a look, and they're always welcome. Everybody's always welcome. And numerous people from the city of Midwest City stopped by, and they, they look at the progress. So there are, there are, there are progress being made. I'm not saying it's finished, no. Of course not. It's a, it is a huge building. I'm not saying, you know, everything is finished, it's not, but everything is, is, we are in the right direction. We are getting calls for, for leasing. We are getting people excited. We are getting people talking to us finally, and, and we are, so I think all that is a plus.
And, and we agree with you. I think the young lady that's with you has raised her hand up. Could you give her a chance to speak?
Of course.
Just the interest and time, and so we can go on and move on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Barini, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, sir. And also a member of council, thank you.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Sharina Killingsworth, three six zero one Quell Drive, Norman, Oklahoma. I've been present at, the question was asked by Mr. Reed. I was at the meetings with Billy Powerless's office, the members of his team, also present at every visit there at the mall. The directive that was given to us was based on, unlike many of the other malls throughout Oklahoma City, Midwest City requires a certificate of occupancy or business license for each business. Each, each space in the mall is individually addressed, addressed, actually. It has its own individual. So we, or Mr. Barini as an owner, cannot obtain a certificate of occupancy for those spaces. What he is required to do is have a, a fire suppression system in place. However, the fire suppression system, let's say that a tenant leases a space that's five thousand square feet. At that point, it does not require a fire suppression system because a certificate of occupancy is obtained for less than the square footage that is required by ordinance for occupancy in the mall. As that increases, we've also talked with the Fire Marshal's office about at what percentage or what amount of square footage has to be obtained for certain things to be met. We've met with Christine, we've met with other members of Billy's team, city management planning. We have been actively working to meet all the ordinance and requirements. We understand several things also have to take place, even with the issue with the violations that have occurred. We at the time have a plan in place, a plan had been submitted to maintain keeping the mall, there is not a request for a change of use. It is listed currently as a mercantile. That is still the plan for it to be, I mean, as it is, zoned as a mercantile. The city requested that if there was going to be storage in the building, well, actually, I'm just gonna leave it there, because the item on your agenda is only concerning six eight zero one, which is actually the mall itself. We talked about doing it in the two phases. They said they would issue a certificate of occupancy if we walled off the one half and removed items from the A to Z, that is, the mall area itself. If we removed those items, then that would make the mall vacant. At the mall, point of the mall being vacant, we could obtain a certificate of occupancy for the common area and then open to the public as long as we met the guidelines and move forward.
Thank you for being here, ma'am, we appreciate the input.
Thank you.
And again, we'll continue to work with you as much as we can.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barini?
I also, I also signed a contract, I don't know if they're gonna accept it yet or not. I put the bid to buy, to purchase a building, so we could also, at the same time, to vacate the property also at the same time. So I'll know in about five to seven days if they accepted my bid. If they do, then we also do that also, at the same time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The chair would entertain a motion to accept the quarterly report on Heritage Park Mall?
So who?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item for discussion.
The next discussion item is discussion consideration of approval of a resolution regarding the financing of Sooner Town Center. One, approving and authorizing the execution of subordination, standstill, intercreditor agreement, and reaffirmation and agreement regarding rights underground lease agreement and authorizing officers of the city to finalize, modify, approve, execute, and deliver the agreement and other related documents. Two, confirming and stating that there are no investment policies applicable to the Midwest City Municipal Authority preventing the loan to owner approved by authority resolution number seventeen dash oh three on November one, twenty seventeen, and repealing any inconsistent investment policies. And three, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the authority arising in the event of a merger event under agreement, and waiving competitive bidding on the sale of the indebtedness and authorizing the indebtedness to be sold at a discount by negotiated sale under the limits provided by Title sixty Oklahoma Statute, section one seventy-six. And four, approving a mortgage of city property in the event of a merger event under the agreement. I think we, and then item D eleven is discussion consideration of possible action, if any resulting from executive session. And then we also have two executive session items. Mr. Anderson, how do you want us to proceed on this?
Well, I would ask the council to go ahead and vote, go into executive session on the city council agenda on this discussion item. But we also have the same discussion item for the municipal authority and also for the hospital authority. So I would ask to, for the council to go ahead and, and address going into executive session with the council, and then recess, and then open the authority meeting, and making the same vote to go into executive session and recess, and then the hospital authority, and then making a vote to go into executive session and to handle the simultaneously, since they are regarding the same subject, the refinancing. Is there any action we need to take on items, on item ten?
Not at this point.
With that being said, we open up the new business public discussion of our agenda. Any council, or any member of the audience wish to bring something to the council? Keep in mind, it's not agenda items, cannot engage in rapid, rapid discussion with-
I know you guys are tired, I'm tired too. I just have a question about the city flag, if that's gonna be done with, if you picked a winner for that yet?
The, I'll, I'll get with you offline on that.
So we're gonna have a motion to-
The chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Have a motion, and then a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are hereby recessed from the city council agenda. We call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority agenda. We have a consent agenda with this. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the Midwest City Municipal Authority. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
We have one-
Do you have one discussion item with this?
And this is discussion consideration of approval of a resolution regarding the financing of Sooner Town Center. One, approving and authorizing the execution of subordination, standstill, and intercreditor agreement and reaffirmation and agreement regarding rights underground lease, and authorizing officers of the authority to finalize, modify, approve, execute, and deliver the agreement and other related documents. Two, confirming and stating that there are no investment policies of the authority preventing the loan to owner approved by authority resolution number seventeen dash oh three on November one, twenty seventeen, and repealing any inconsistent investment policies. And three, approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the authority secured by a mortgage or a guarantee by the authority of indebtedness secured by a mortgage arising in the event of a merger event under the agreement, and waiving competitive bidding on the sale of indebtedness and authorizing this indebtedness to be sold at a discount by negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title sixty Oklahoma Statute, section one seventy-six. Second item is discussion consideration of possible action, if any resulting from executive session.
No further actions required on this discussion item. We now enter into the new business public discussion for the Midwest City Municipal Authority.
We need to go, okay, no, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any member of the audience have anything to bring before the Midwest City Municipal Authority? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have a consent agenda with this agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We have two discussion items.
First item is discussion and consideration of accepting the hospital authority investment performance review for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty seventeen, in action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make, or changes to the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. You do have the, the quarterly report, and there is no need to change investment guidelines, but there would be, would be appropriate to accept the quarterly report.
You have to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the quarterly report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Next two items.
Discussion consideration of appointing a new Ward One member to the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Grantors to serve out the remaining, remainder of resigning member, John, Mr. John Caulfield's four-year term ending April twenty-six, twenty twenty.
At this time, I would move to appoint Amy Hado for the board representative to the BOG, please.
Second.
I have a nomination, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Next discussion item.
Now we have D three, discussion consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of one, a omnibus loan modification and extension agreement between the authority and S T C three LLC and Oklahoma Limited Liability Company, and B, subordination, standstill and intercreditor agreement and reaffirmation and agreement regarding rights under ground lease and authorizing officers of the authority to finalize, modify, approve or execute and deliver the foregoing agreements and other related documents. And item four, discussion consideration of possible action, if any, resulting from executive session.
Now move into the new business public discussion, Midwest City Hospital Authority. Anyone in the audience have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We are now in executive session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending.